Angle, uh. The availability of nutrients, all the key functions and aspects related to soil nutrients. So so far we discussed learn from Walter on soil sponge, the hydrology aspect, all of that. And now we are going into the bio fertility. So uh we'll have a uh improved understanding on what is bio fertility? Fertilizers, uh how to enhance microbial processes? Biostimulants and agroecology. So we'll go into uh some of the videos. Yes, uh yeah, okay, so yeah, I have covered this. So I think we can start the first video. Okay, so there are a lot of other resources also apart from videos that are given in the module. So the posters are very informative and the optional videos are also very interesting. And there is essential resource, uh material also references. So what we will be discussing here is the main videos only, not the entire module. Because it is, it will take a couple of hours more. So uh optional videos will leave and we expect that you will cover in your personal study. And we'll also see that uh from from optional videos. If there are uh very important uh. We will uh build some estimates from that also. Okay, so we'll go to the first part of Walter's video on bio fertility. Yes, please, still working.
Good morning and welcome to module six of this masterclass series on natural farming for India's agroecology regeneration. Uh specifically in this module, we want to look at natural farming in regenerating the bio fertility of soils. We've been looking at the whole basis of natural farming, why, what, how, the sponge? And then we looked at last module at the effect of that sponge, the power of that sponge in rehydrating landscape and providing us resilience for the hydrology, for providing water for those agro ecosystems. This module, we want to go again looking at the role of that sponge in making nutrients available for that soil, in that soil. And obviously nutrients are critical because in a sense we need essential nutrients to grow plants. Okay, plants are taking carbon dioxide, water, sunshine from the air and of course converting them into sugars and oxygen as a waste product. And of course that sugar, that sugar cellulose lignin production by plants is really the organic matter feedstock that feeds whole life on this planet. So photosynthesis is a key process. And while water, CO2, sunshine isn't limited, nutrients are. And of course, plants need these essential nutrients. And of course, these essential nutrients have to come from soils. So a critical issue is how do plants get the nutrients from soils that they need to grow to maintain life on this planet? There are ninety-six natural elements in the periodic table, we all studied that at school. But about fifty of those natural elements are actually used in biology. We don't have all the science and knowledge of what each one of those fifty exactly is doing. But we've identified there's well over forty essential mineral nutrients for different aspects of plant function, plant biochemistry. And all those nutrients have to come from soils or even nutrients like nitrogen which are in the air through soils. Because basically the nitrogen in the air can't be used directly. It has to be converted from nitrogen into ammonia or nitrate or amino acids through soils, through soil microbes to make them available to plants. So this is really the key point, you see? The actual bio fertility of soils is actually associated with the availability of the nutrients that the plant needs. Okay, so very much fertility, you've got to look at and say, look, what is the availability of those nutrients? Is that plant getting the right nutrients and the right forms, concentrations, ratios and balances it needs for its growth at that point of time? And that may be changing, will change all through its life cycle. Okay, so it's this dynamic availability functionality of soils that is critical. And of course, it's not just the content of nutrients. Industrial agriculture, our green revolution agriculture was all focused on, look, yes, nutrients is essential. We need to add nutrients or we're extracting nutrients from soils, mining soils for their nutrients. Therefore legitimately, we need to add nutrients back again. So let's go and mine mineral nutrient deposits, turn them into soluble fertilizer, add the soluble fertilizer. And so the whole mentality about nutrition has come on to add additions, you know? What do we have to add as fertilizer? But we've lost sight of the real reality of it. It's the actual, not the additions that matter, it's the availability. Nature doesn't work with additions. Nature works with the nutrients that are there naturally in that soil and making those nutrients ever and ever more available and more efficiently cycling. So it raises productivity of soils through enhancing the availability. Whereas our green revolution, our industrial agriculture has tended to ignore that and just simply said, oh, we can add nutrients to have that function. And as we'll see, no, the two things are completely different and we can't achieve the productivity that we need to just by adding nutrients. Okay, now the question is then, right, well, look, how does nature make soils ever more fertile? By basically not adding nutrients. And again, it comes down very simply to the sponge. As we showed in the fourth module, basically if we have a rock or solid compacted soil, there are mineral particles there, but generally speaking, they're not available. They're not exposed for absorption by roots or by the fungi associated with plants. So the plants can't get access to the nutrients, they're not available. Whereas by building the sponge, by building that three-dimensional matrix in the soil, by making minerals more surface, I mean the surface exposure of minerals much, much higher, plants, roots and microbes can get access to those nutrients. So the fertility in nature is built by enhancing the access to nutrients, natural nutrients in those soils rather than relying on their additions. Conversely, where we're looking at adding nutrients, but we have soils which are highly compacted, degraded, oxidized, which is what's happening with industrial agriculture. Even then, the nutrients that we're adding are often again not available because they've either leached out of those soils through water. So they've been lost from the soil or they've been volatilized in the case of nitrates or nitrogen. Or they've been occluded, which means they've been locked up by minerals and no longer chemically available to the plant for absorption. So eighty percent of the nutrients we're adding as fertilizer effectively aren't being used by plants. They become lost very rapidly by leaching, volatilization and then being locked up, occluded by mineral compounds. Again, it's the availability, it's not the quantity, it's not the additions that matter. And natural farming works by enhancing the availability of nutrients as does nature. It's actually quite profound because basically there are five key processes to make nutrients more available in soils. And of course, this is the fixation of nutrients such as nitrogen from the air. And we know that that happens, for example, through legumes, through the bacteria in rhizobia bacteria in lignum nodules, but also happens through blue-green algae in the soil, azobacter, ososporum, lots of bacteria in the rhizosphere roots. And these organisms are actually fixing nitrogen from the air, making it availability. So it's a fixation of nutrients. The second key thing that makes nutrients available very critically is their solubilization. As we said, lots of mineral nutrients are logically unavailable in chemical forms that are not soluble and basically therefore unavailable. And it's really the role of microbes, fungi particularly and bacteria that then exude organic acids to change the chemistry to make those nutrients available. So the solubilization of natural soil nutrients is critically important. Just as important then is accessing those nutrients. Okay, you can think of a three-dimensional structure of soil. And the question is, there's minerals throughout that soil, but can the roots of the plants access those nutrients physically? And of course, if the soils are compacted, waterlogged or degraded, then the roots can't proliferate. And of course, the roots can only get to nutrients that, I mean, the roots can only get absorb nutrients that they can get access to. So restricted root growth has a profound effect in limiting availability access. Where we have compacted degraded soils as we do now in industrial agriculture and only have roots ten centimeters deep in the soil. We're obviously only able to get access to nutrients in those surface soils, often dependent on fertilizer additions to do that.
Yeah, this is the part one of introducing this new module. And Walter emphasizes about the importance of photosynthesis, that is the key process. And through that, nutrients like hydrogen, carbon and oxygen, they get into plant system, but whereas other nutrients need to be taken from the soil. So therefore bio fertility is very important because uh from what nutrients get into the plant system, whereas other living organisms also depend on that for their own nutrition. So green revolution actually has compacted the soil and uh in that whatever is applied artificially, eighty percent of them is lost very rapidly. Therefore, we are now adding more and more fertilizers, no, decade after decade to get the same quantity of yield. But how nature recycles nutrients, how plants take from soils? He has listed out five important things that are very important like fixation, solubilization and accessing those nutrients. So other two he will be covering in the next part. All these are microbial dependent. So on, if you are enhancing microbial activity in your soils, all this fixation of nutrients, solubilization and accessing, all of those are easy. So we'll go into the next part to have the continuation of the lecture.
By contrast, of course, natural farming situations and nature doesn't just rely on the ten centimeters of soil on the surface, but it exploits the soil right throughout the rootable volume of soil, often two, three meters depth. And so you can see the quantity of nutrients that are available because of that increased rootability, root depth interaction profoundly increases the supply of nutrients, even though none had been added. The fourth element in this whole nutrient uptake availability process is actually the active uptake of those nutrients. In nature and in natural farming system, nutrients are taken up largely by microbes in membrane interfaces that proliferate throughout the soil, vast lengths of hyphal membrane interfaces interfacing the surfaces of mineral particles and connected to the roots. And these mycorrhizal symbioses are critically important in taking up nutrients for most plants in nature and natural farming. And so it's the active accessing and absorption of those nutrients through these microbial processes that govern their availability. By contrast, in industrial farming, green farming, green revolution farming system, we've effectively killed most of those microbes. And now we're dependent on nutrients that are in the soil solution. Only those nutrients that can be there as free soluble ions in the soil solution can effectively be taken up by those industrial plants. And of course, that's only a very, very small percentage of the nutrients. And a lot of the essential nutrients, because they're bound onto soil surfaces through iron, ionic bonds, don't enter the soil solution and therefore not available. Availability of plants grown naturally, we'll come into that in the next module in much more detail. But the point is that we are then dependent on ever adding more nutrients in soluble form to feed plants in the industrial system because most of the nutrients are actually volatilized, lost, occluded or basically bound up onto surfaces and not available. So we're really building an enormous nutrient dependency, additional, a dependency for more additions in those industrial soils, whereas in nature, of course, these microbial processes continually making them available. The fifth key element in this availability, of course, is nutrient cycling. Okay, basically all the nutrients are taken up by plants, the plants grow. But obviously naturally those plants then die and decompose in an ever more productive ecological cycle. And again, it's the microbes that are breaking down that organic matter and making those minerals available again in that nutrient cycling. And of course, rainforests, for example, can grow on very, very poor soils. So we've got this paradox of the world's most bioproduptive terrestrial ecosystem growing on very poor soils because of the very, very efficient cycling. The point we're making that each of these five aspects of nutrient availability are completely dependent on microbial processes. Fixation, solubilization, access, uptake, cycling are all microbially dependent. And it's actually the enhancement of the microbial ecology in the soil and a natural farming system as in nature that give you bio fertility. And gives you bio fertility through availability, not the addition. By contrast, green revolution industrial crops are totally dependent on ever more additions. But even those additions are being lost and not available. So it's in a completely different nutritional context. The bottom line is over eighty percent of the bio fertility of soils, the bio fertility of agro ecosystems is governed by these microbial processes. Okay, and it makes it clear that we have to think about how do we stimulate and enhance those biological processes? Because only that can give us nutrition in a sustainable way. And of course, we can do that, and this is what natural farming does. It sort of says, right, we are going to, first of all, we're going to be careful and we're not going to kill these biological natural processes. Industrial agriculture kills them all by fire, cultivation, exposure, over fertilization, biocides, bare fallows. So all of these processes kill these microbes. The same processes are oxidizing the carbon out of soil that we heard in module four, also killing all these microbes. And so that's the first thing we don't do, we don't kill all these microbes. Secondly, we feed those microbes and we feed those microbes through growing plants, through the root exudates, thirty, forty percent of carbon sugars that the plants are exuding through their roots to feed this microbial ecology that it needs for its bio fertility. And of course, that's what we can do and we can enhance that feeding of those microbes by sustaining longevity of green growth, three sixty-five day green cover on those soils because that maintains root exudates, that maintains microbial ecology. We can also stimulate the microbial activity through a range of biostimulants. Often these are associated with animal excreta or byproducts from animal excreta, whether it's worm castings, worm juices, cattle urine, et cetera. So this bringing herbivores, animals into the systems, the, their anaerobic fermentation of foods are producing byproducts that are extremely important in stimulating these microbes. So natural farming systems have used these microbes and these biostimulants to enhance the activity of these organisms. So it's very important, people always say, hang on a minute, bio, natural farming is growing plants without adding nutrients, how is that possible? Well, it's possible because they're stimulating these availability processes, making natural nutrients available more efficiently rather than relying on additions. But they're not adding nutrients, they're just switching on the natural processes that make those nutrients more important, more valuable. There's a valid point though, that basically as long we, while we can grow lots of productive crops and harvest productive crops through natural farming systems, over time, we are taking nutrients from those soils. So over time, we do have to return those nutrients back to the soils. But we do that, of course, through cycling, nutrient cycling, organic matter cycling, composting, animal waste returns. So the whole idea is that in natural farming, as in nature, we are returning and rebuilding a cyclic nutrient economy. And of course, that's our compost, our worm juices, our mulches, our biostimulants. And all those practices that natural farming is using, animal urine, animal dung, et cetera, is all contributing to that cycling. Uh this is going to be critically important in the future. We're going to have ten billion people on this planet by twenty fifty. Seventy percent of them will be living in urban concentrations in cities. And of course, they will be excreting vast quantities of nutrients that they've brought in as their essential food into the cities. And we're going to have to find ways of how do we get those nutrients in their waste cycled back into the landscape? How do we get the flow of nutrients? From city back into soils through these natural cyclic processes. And of course, we can do that, urban agriculture, of course, is powerfully valuable in this because it will do all this cycling locally. But also there's very nice ways of integrating agro ecosystems where we take nutrients from cities and safely return them back into soils. But we've got to start designing agroecologies that do this rather than become dependent just on adding mineral fertilizers. Mineral fertilizers are actually very, very dangerous on another thing because they are actually contributing very seriously to the oxidation and degradation of soils. So look, this is basically an overview of bio fertility, the key role of microbes in making those nutrients available, the eighty percent of bio fertility that is governed by these microbial processes and how that contrasts totally with what's happened over the last seventy years in industrial agriculture. The next module, we're going to look at that in terms of its, the effect of this change in nutrition on the nutritional integrity of our food and its consequences to our preventative health. But basically, um yeah, it's a continuing story, but really just focus on nature creates bio, more, ever more bio fertile soil through these processes. We can too through natural farming. We must do this because only through this can we feed the ten billion people by twenty fifty and secure our future. Thank you.
Yes, uh this is part two. Uh Walter continues explaining the other two key processes like both one being active uptake of nutrients and nutrients cycling. Uh he's suggesting active uptake of nutrients. Uh what does active uptake means, we'll learn in the coming session. So all these processes are microbial activity dependent. So therefore, we need to enhance their uh activity in our soils. So he's also introducing us that uh the membrane interfaces, the micro, mycorrhizal body, the membrane are also interfacing with soil particular surface. So a lot of exchange of nutrients happens through that. So normally in our conventional agricultural sciences, we talk about mostly bacteria involved in fixation mobilization of nutrients like rhizobium, but on fungi, there is not much emphasis. But by the way, Walter is now completely relying on the fungal network, mycorrhiza and all. Uh it shows they are a lot more important to understanding more about the activity of fungi. So as a statement, he's telling eighty percent of all bio fertility is governed by microbial activity. And conventional agriculture destroys all of this. It suppresses microbial activity because, because the nutrients are chemically in nature, they, they alter the pH, they compact the soil, air and water cannot go. And there is all, all the organic matter is oxidized. So in that context, microbes do not survive and the soil has to be completely dependent on artificial nutrients which plant cannot make use of efficiently. So that is, and he, uh how you can revive microbial activity and rejuvenate so that our system is completely dependent on their function? So he is introducing us to biostimulation. So biostimulants, uh any animal product or plant products that have some stimulating effect on the plant. So, so by use of these biostimulants, we can activate the soil microbiota and thereby our nutrient bio fertility of the soil also increases. And also fifth point nutrient cycling, he's drawing our attention to the situation in that in the future, that one twenty billion population will be there and seventy percent of it resides in urban areas and they access food from rural areas. So a lot of nutrients get transported to that, uh that urban areas. And it is important to think about how the wastage without being ending up into pollution can be, you know, recycled so that soils also get plenty of nutrition. So this is one aspect, recycling of nutrients that we need to study more. Okay, so we'll move into the next video. This is from Soil Food Web School, Ellen Engram's channel.
How does nutrient cycling work?
How does nutrient cycling work? During photosynthesis, plants combine carbon dioxide from the atmosphere and sunlight to produce simple sugars and carbohydrates. But just like humans, plants can't live on sugars and carbs alone. Fortunately for plants, there's a rich source of nutrients right under their feet in the soil parent material and in organic matter. When dead plant material or organic matter falls to the surface of the soil, it's gradually decomposed by microorganisms. Nutrients are then released into the soil in plant available form. The next generation of plants then absorbs these nutrients and so nutrient cycling begins again. We humans remove nutrients from this cycle when we take food from our fields, but these are easily replenished when microorganisms harvest nutrients from the parent material, the rocks and pebbles, and the much smaller particles such as sand, silts, and clays. At the molecular level, the parent material comprises large lattice structures which hold nitrogen, phosphorus, potassium, boron, calcium, iron, and all the other nutrients that apply. Plant needs. With a balanced soil food web in place, plants can control the nutrient cycling that's happening in the root zone. They invest some of the sugars and carbs they produce during photosynthesis into the soil in order to feed bacteria and fungi. This causes bacterial and fungal populations to increase dramatically. The bacteria and fungi then get busy harvesting nutrients from the organic matter and parent material, absorbing these nutrients into their bodies. Predatory microorganisms are attracted and they begin consuming the bacteria and fungi. The wastes left behind by these predators contains an abundance of nutrients in plant available form. These are easily absorbed into the plant roots. So the plant gets a good return on its investment, exchanging sugars and carbs in return for all the other nutrients it requires. This results in well nourished, resilient plants and in nutrient dense food for us humans. With a balanced soil food web in place, plants are able to access all the nutrients they need on demand simply by varying the compounds they release into the soil. This means that farmers don't need to waste money buying and applying fertilizers. The soil food web costs very little to maintain by comparison. Having nutrient rich plants results in greater yields and improved quality of the produce. Reduced costs and greater yields result in dramatically increasing profits for many farmers who have used the soil food web approach. The nitrogen based fertilizers that farmers use are made using huge amounts of fossil fuels. Only around forty percent of these inorganic fertilizers get absorbed by crops. The rest is either volatileized, polluting the atmosphere, or it runs off polluting our rivers, lakes, and oceans, causing algal blooms and dead zones that are a major environmental problem. So restoring the soil food web leads to nutrient rich food for the consumer, increased profits for the farmer, and also benefits the environment. For more information about the numerous benefits of the soil food web and how you can get involved, please visit soilfoodweb.com.
So the message of this video is also, we have listened already so many times. So how nutrients enter into the soil, what we have to additional points that we need to understand from this video is that there is an interface of mineral, organic, and biological system. So they help in nutrient recycling. So when a plant exudes certain substances, one type of organisms dominate and then higher animals like nematodes, they eat up the other organisms and in the process, the byproducts, the leftover material in this, you know, step by step radiating. So valuable minerals are released. So, so the plant, for the plant, it is easy to take those nutrients. That is one thing. And also what this video says is that even when all the nutrients that a plant takes root is taken by humans, not everything is recycled into the soil, even in that situation, those nutrients are replenished from parent material. So there is, it implies that there is no dearth of nutrients. There is a lot of nutrients that a plant can now source from. And one more important point is that for, it also, the video also suggests that if what, if a plant needs a certain kind of nutrient, through its exudates, it kind of signals the mycorrhiza, micro, microbes. So that in the, from the soil, only those nutrients will be taken up. So it is kind of selective absorption. What nutrient it wants is signaled by plant itself. I think these are the additional points from, from this lecture. So we'll go to the next video, please. So this is a song with animation on the importance of several nutrients and how recycling takes place. Yeah. So you can see in this module, so how your management practices can affect the depth of soil. Okay. So you can have more information from, about this picture and relevant discussion from this link. Okay, we'll move on to the next. You don't need to visit that. Yeah, thanks. And also here, we are now trying to understand soil food web and there are several levels of organisms in the soil also. So how different groups of organisms, what function they perform, and how is it useful for plant growth is all mentioned in this table. So it, it encourages us to, you know, do a lot of quiz questions to you next week. Okay, yeah, next please. Yes, okay, we'll visit this. It's a very short video and there are slides in the videos, that's all. It is a very simple message that plant, soil makes plants and plants make soil. So the soil that is attached to the root system is very dark and, you know, very active in several biological functions. So what is happening is mentioned there. So, so a lot of exudation happens and a lot of, you know, microbes are growing there. So one type of microbes are eaten by the other and nutrients are available to the plants. So it's basically on recycling. And how without plants, soils cannot perform. Yeah, we'll, this, this is optional extra video on soil biology, but how long is this?
This is an hour long video.
An hour long video. But it is from Ellen Ingram, right?
Yes.
Yes. So I think we'll watch it for some time. We'll see how we're close to this.
Welcome to the Soil CRC webinar today. My name is Michael Crawford. I'm the Chief Executive Officer of the Soil CRC. I'd like to begin by acknowledging the traditional custodians of land on which we meet today, wherever you may be in Australia or internationally, and I pay my respects to the elders past and present. I extend that respect to average on Torres Strait Island, the peoples watching on this webinar today. And I extend a very broad welcome to everybody who's attended today. This is our last webinar in our series this year before taking a break over Christmas in January. It is, it is also our largest attendance for this year, representing, recognizing the great interest in this topic around soil biology and some of the work of a soil CRC. It comes on the back of our World Soil Day, fifth of December, last Saturday, and I hope it all recognized and celebrated accordingly, whatever that might be. Normally at this time, I advertise future webinars, but we have no specific webinars planned, as I was just saying, until we come back in February, we'll resume the program. In the meantime, though, I do encourage you to perhaps go back and look at the webinars that you might have missed. We have them all online on our, on our website at soilcrc.com.au. And whilst you're there.
Welcome everyone to the presentation today. As Michael mentioned, there's a very large audience and I think also a very mixed audience. So hopefully today, I will be able to deliver information to, to the broad range of people attending the presentation. So fingers crossed that my IT works. Hopefully everyone's got their fingers crossed for me. And I think we're away now. So I'd also like to, thank you, Michael. In particular, acknowledge Mick Rose, my co author for the presentation today. And you'll see that I've got special, and I'll call it special contributions because there are some embedded videos and there's a whole heap of people who have contributed significantly to my presentation today. So rather than me giving you an introduction to the webinar, I've outsourced this to Professor Terry Rose from Southern Cross University. So handing over to Terry, who's in the field. Terry, as a researcher, what value do you see in testing soil biology?
So if we can understand soil biology or how soil biology affects soil resilience and then what consequences that has for crop growth and overall farm performance, we can actually exploit the soil biology, just trying to A, improve soils, B, improve crops, and C, improve the overall farm and environmental sustainability.
Tell us a bit about some of the Soil CRC field trials that you're running and what you're hoping to expect to see with regards to changes in biology there.
Yep, so basically we're trying to maximize the diversity of microbes and other soil biology in some of the treatments. And we're trying to do that by altering plant diversity in those systems. So by increasing plant diversity, we're hoping we can change soil biology. So we've got treatments, including, for example, some are cover cropping in winter cropping systems, some intercropping, and some undersowing of multiple species underneath, underneath the cash crop. The aim of that is that that diversity drives microbes, diversity changes your soil biology and helps.
From Felicity Gilbert from the Wheat Belt NRA. So I've got a bit of a recording from our discussion. So Felicity, you've been very active in Western Australia organizing and talking soil health workshops. Is there an appetite among growers to better understand soil biology?
I really think that's growing. I think traditionally, farmers have been focused on the sorts of things that they can link very clearly to fertility around soil, soil chemistry and physical properties. And I think in physical and chemical, quite often the linkages are quite obvious about where the constraints are. They're easy, they're relatively easy to manage and they're relatively easy to mitigate. Expensive perhaps, but certainly when you compare it to biology, fertility takes on a whole new, you know, a whole new perspective. Because I'm not sure that anybody actually still fully understands exactly what linkages soil biology has to soil fertility and how they impact upon plants and, and various other qualities. I think that this, this work is certainly gaining momentum and certainly gaining interest. And certainly anecdotally, we are seeing more and more farmers interested in how, wanting to know about how they can actually stimulate biology. But biology in the soil, you know, is incredibly complex and there are, there are parts that are good, parts that are bad, and their interactions with each other, with the whole, with the whole food chain beneath the soil is, is incredibly complex and difficult to understand.
Thank you, Felicity. I think my job's made easy. So here I would like to introduce the soil biology testing framework that we've been working on for some of the Soil CRC projects. And in particular, I would like to acknowledge Mick and, and his classes for, for helping out with the, with the diagram. So we've been developing this framework for the assessment of soil biology and, and essentially, we're using the framework to assess the improvement in soils as well as making agronomics. in soils as well as making agronomic decisions. On the left, you can see where it all starts, and that is with the microbial food source. So the food source is derived from products of photosynthesis. Either as root exudates, leaf litter or soil organic matter that is a processed products of photosynthesis. Then we move to the top of the screen and it's essentially who's there? And there are many new methodologies that have been made available in the last few years to make this assessment easier. While it can be valuable to know who is there, this really is only a part of the picture when we're assessing soil biology, as there is significant functional redundancy in soil, and I wanted to stress that. By this, I mean that if one particular genus or species is affected by a particular practice or event, there's usually some other microorganism that steps up and completes that same function. And that takes us onto function. So we move one across to the right. Here we can assess the potential of a soil to perform a particular function. This may be the ability to notify ammonium in soil, or it might be the ability to degrade complex carbon substrates. This can be measured by techniques such as looking at functional genes or enzymes. And we can see a little diagram there of a gene that we can measure or an enzyme performing its particular function. However, the potential to undertake a function does not always relate to what has actually happened in soil, particularly when this is integrated over time, where there may have been fluctuation in soil moisture content or temperature. So very, very climate driven. This takes us to the assessment of the actual function that has been performed that is independent upon completely independent upon who is there. So after we understood who's there and what they can do, there's still the lingering question around what does it really all mean? And is the soil better or is it more resilient? And in that sort of resilience framework, we can see a bit of aggregation there and we can see the microbes and the roots working together. And interestingly, what happens now is in that resilient soil, we're actually driving that food source. So when we started to develop that resilient soil, we're actually altering the way the food source is made available to the microorganisms and then that whole cycle that we can see can start changing. And I'd also like to just talk about some of the data categories because I think that's pretty important in the way that we frame some of the work. So we've got research data and this data is often complex in nature and is used to test hypotheses, scientific hypotheses. For example, to determine whether a particular practice, for example, mixed species cover cropping that Terry spoke about improves the ability of the soil to cycle carbon and supply nitrogen. Or whether the soil becomes more resilient. The data is often used to help understand some of the mechanisms that are involved. And I'll give a few of these examples later in the presentation. Then you've got data that farms collect to to verify a practice change. So biology data can be very useful to verify whether a practice has changed the biology. For example, increase the ability to cycle carbon. This is an example of the soil you're on this experiment, but there are other great examples. For example, the soil health cards that have been developed by Soil Care for a number of industries. Now, this data is not actually used to make any immediate immediate agronomic decisions, just to track how your particular change in practice is is coming along. And then you've got data to inform a decision. So this type of data is very common when you get your soil tested for a chemical status, where the test report will usually come with a fertilizer recommendation. This type of data, though, is far less common when assessing soil biology. But there are some important examples that I'll present later. Now, this decision icon is used throughout the presentation to highlight data that falls into this category. Keep an eye out for that little icon because I think that's that's where some of the important points are going to be made. So we're going to go on to assessing the food source. This is kind of where it all starts. Now, I won't spend too much time here describing the various bits of equipment that help us to describe the microbial food source. Total organic organic carbon is commonly analyzed by LeCoq, but there are several wet chemistry measures that can also be used. We also have a look at the carbon in the various fractions in soil. For example, the particular carbon is a carbon in fractions above fifty three micrometers in size and is more biologically available and the mineral protected carbon that may occur in fractions smaller than fifty three micrometers. Essentially, the smaller the fraction of carbon, the more it has been microbially processed and the less bioavailable that carbon is for other microorganisms. Mick Rose has also been putting a lot of effort into understanding the quality of root exudates as these are key drivers for selecting and controlling the rhizosphere microbial community, which I'll discuss shortly. And here we go. So fresh products of photosynthesis of photosynthesis are key food sources for soil microorganisms. On the right, you can see one of mixed chromatograms of exudates from rice with each peak representing a different low molecular weight compound. And these include amino acids, organic acids, sugars, sugar alcohols and phenolics. There's a general understanding that the more complex exudate profiles and those containing compounds that are harder to break down would favor fungal growth, while the more simple sugars favor bacterial proliferation. This Riser Box experiment, which I've shown in several other webinars that I've presented previously, is a great example where roots from corn and the other little plants grown in the middle gravitate towards the legume and away from the grass. In that case, I think it was wheat that was being grown. And that's most likely due to the complex interaction within the rhizosphere between these exudates and the biology that follows. So incidentally, that system was not nitrogen limited, so it had nothing to do with the nitrogen fixation of the legume. So this type of this type of data starts to justify our work around mixed species cover cropping, integration of legumes and brassicas, for example, into systems where there are grasses. This is the NMR nuclear magnetic residence facility at Griffith University that has been used by Professor Chen and his team to assess the quality of microbial food sources from different systems. For example, they've done done some work comparing food sources from tropical grazing to sugarcane and banana leaf going into soil. By being able to characterize the properties of the carbon going into soil, for example, as I mentioned, the quality of the leaf litter and the carbon after it's been processed by the soil biology, we can start to understand the mechanisms associated with soil carbon storage and how the carbon properties relate to the soil microbiology. An example here might be the bacterial to fungal ratio. So this particular spectra is assessing the quality of dissolved organic fraction of the dissolved organic fraction in the soil. And it shows that about forty four percent of that carbon in that DOC is very readily bioavailable and will probably be used by the R. strategist bacteria. So assessing who's there. So I could actually spend hours here exploring some of the methodologies for assessing who's there. But I've narrowed it down to some of the key assessments that we would regularly do in in our research. Here, I'd like to hand over to Justine Cox for a moment.
Hi, I'm Justine Cox. I'm a soil scientist here at Wallingbah. The microbial biomass carbon test measures the weight of the carbon from the microorganisms in a soil sample. Mostly, this is bacteria and fungi. Biomass carbon is useful as it measures the fraction of the total organic carbon that comes from microorganisms. It's a measure quick to respond to land management and the climate. It is often around one to five percent of the total organic carbon in the soil. Biomass carbon is measured on site by the fumigation extraction method. Essentially, a soil sample is split into two, where one sample is exposed to chloroform vapor, which breaks apart the microorganism cells. This releases all of the cell carbon and other nutrients. Both soils are then extracted with potassium sulfate and the amount of carbon is measured by a LeCoq analyzer. The difference is due to the microorganisms. The data is expressed as milligrams of carbon per gram of dry soil. We can use the data for comparing treatments in a replicated trial or for monitoring over time. Biomass carbon is a very complementary measure to microbial activity. The percentage of biomass carbon to total organic carbon can tell us about the decomposition rate of organic matter in the soil.
That the biomass carbon test is often used in conjunction with respiration data. And that is how much carbon dioxide is produced by the soil biology. And that is to develop an indices known as the metabolic quotient. For example, we have shown that soils from an orchard with high residues of copper fungicide have a higher metabolic quotient than soils that are not contaminated. So this needs to be considered carefully when we're assessing soil respiration. What does it actually mean? So we can relate to this same phenomena. So when, you know, I'm stressed, for example, I'll have an elevated heart rate and I'll start sweating. And, you know, microbes in soil are actually not that different. So essentially, when they're stressed, they they've got lower carbon use efficiency. And they start to release more of that carbon food source as CO2. In a very mature biological system, it tends to be lower respiration, high carbon use efficiency. And essentially, that's converting more of that photosynthesize so that that new carbon that's being produced by by plants into stored soil carbon and less into carbon dioxide. QPCR or quantitative polymerase chain reaction is a DNA method that quantitatively assesses the abundance of specific phylogenetic groups of microorganisms in soil. Here is an important example from the predictive B team at Sadi that offers a service to analyze some of the key disease organisms in soil. The test has been calibrated to a risk rating for particular crops and is one of the few soil biology tests that results in an agronomic decision. That decision could be related to which fungicide to use, for example, which cultivate a plant or even which species of crop to grow or indeed avoid. And here is the first example of this decision icon that I made. I'm handing over to Anders Klassen.
My name is Anders and I'm a PhD student here at the Wallingbah Agricultural Institute. I research mycorrhizal symbiosis in crops. Mycorrhizal symbiosis is important because it has the potential to improve the productive capacity of our cropping systems and also further us towards our sustainability objectives. I take in roots from the field and I assess them using a combination of both molecular and morphological techniques. Mycorrhizal fungi are in constant communication and exchange with the roots of their host plants. Fungi provide soilborne resources to the host plant and in exchange, host plants provide benefits to the fungi, including the products of photosynthesis. To more fully understand mycorrhizal symbiosis in crops, we amplify the amount of DNA found in soil, we amplify the amount of DNA found in roots and we compare them. And we scrutinize the DNA found in roots to establish which fungi have made it to the root and form a symbiosis from those mycorrhizal fungi available in the soil reservoir. To support our molecular data, we bring samples into the lab and scrutinize them under the microscope. By assessing the amount of root columnar, we can establish a relationship between the amount of DNA detected and the extent and growth development of the organism inside the root. By combining these data, we get a clearer picture of how assessing mycorrhizal symbiosis and sugarcane
Yeah, the contents of this video are very technical in nature and how to assess the microbial community, what parameters, what tests, all of that and how their results showing that is being discussed in this video. So I think that the research team can go through this in detail, will build some assignment solely for the research team basing on this video. For the rest of us, I think we can, we don't have much to capture because these are very technical parameters and analysis. So we can skip this video, we'll go to the next one. So this is one video about sustainable agriculture and importance of healthy soils. Though it is not.
Soil, it's one of the most underrated and little understood wonders on our fragile planet. Here's why.
Yeah, the earlier video was kind of, no, it still talks about adding certain nutrients, all of that. So it is not completely in line with what Walter has been teaching us. We'll go to the next video.
What are biostimulants? The Official European Biostimulants Industry Council says, "Plant biostimulants contain substances and/or microorganisms whose function, when applied to plants of the rhizosphere, is to stimulate natural processes to enhance or benefit nutrient uptake, nutrient efficiency, tolerance to antibiotic stress and/or crop quality." In December of 2018, the US for the first time included essentially the same definition in its Agriculture Improvement Act, often called the Farm Bill. The essence of this biostimulant definition is accepted globally. Biostimulants are a critical element of sustainable agriculture because of their ability to improve soil quality and increase nutrient use efficiency. They are different than traditional fertilizers in that they do not deliver nutritional elements to the plants, although they often improve the assimilation of nutrients. And they are not chemical plant growth regulators. Yet some biostimulant substances have been shown to activate precursors to plant hormones and stimulate production and gene expression. And they are neither pesticides nor herbicides. Some biostimulants, however, are derived from microorganisms that have been shown to be effective at protecting plants from such things as soilborne pathogens. Biostimulants are very much in a class of their own because of the extensive array of their benefits. There are some very important factors that differentiate biostimulants from traditional fertilizers and other inputs. Plant biostimulants are often derived from natural sources and they have the ability to positively impact the natural physiological functions of all the various structures of a plant: the roots, stems, leaves, flowers, fruits and seed. To use an analogy, it would be like supplementing your own nutritional requirements with a healthy source of protein and energy, micronutrients and beneficial probiotics to help your body realize optimal strength and growth and to help ward off or recover from disease. Examples of physiological functions that biostimulants can affect include such things as increases in root growth and biomass, increased uptake and translocation of nutrients, activation of hormone signaling pathways and gene expression, protection of photosynthetic activity during stress and even improving a plant's rhizosphere, which can provide a better environment for symbiotic relationships with beneficial microbials in the soil. Stimulation of these physiological functions then result in actual physical changes in plants, such as better nutritional composition, improvements in nutrient use competence, improved water use capability, enhanced resistance to and recovery from antibiotic stress such as drought and salinity, and higher chlorophyll concentration. Growers are continuously faced with the need to balance the economics of input and output. The careful use of high-quality, carefully researched biostimulants have demonstrated their ability to overcome the cost of use for many farmers through improvements in their harvestable yield. They have added to the sustainability of a grower's land by reducing the need for inputs and decreasing nutrient leaching. We've seen increases in the value of crops with improvements in fruit quality and extensions and shelf life. And we have even seen improvements in biofortification, the process by which the nutritional quality of food crops is improved or the nutritional composition of crops, meaning their sugar, nutrient or protein content. Biostimulants have wide application efficacy and are generally beneficial for all growing plants, whether in industrial agriculture, professional horticulture, or even home gardening. Depending on the type, biostimulants can be applied via foliar means, with fertigation, in furrow, at transplant, on roots or on seeds. And they are produced from a multitude of sources and technologies: humic and fulvic acids, beneficial microbials like Mycorrhizae, Trichoderma, and plant growth promoting rhizobacteria; protein hydrolytes, preferably from vegetal sources with amino acids or even better containing complete peptide chains; seaweed, kelp, botanicals, the list goes on. And the list will continue to grow as new products and technologies are developed. The bottom line is that investment into continued development of biostimulant technologies and research into understanding specifically what physiological functions can be affected and how is essential for the future of sustainability in agriculture. And access for growers to solid, dependable information regarding the types, technologies and use of biostimulants is what biostimulant.com is all about. Welcome to the journey.
This is a very informative video on biostimulants. So we are using biostimulants in the form of bijanbuta, jivambuta, ghamjivambuta, all of that. Blacktoacid, basilus, such preparations. But we don't know exactly how they are working, or they are working scientifically, but we have seen that when we use that in certain frequency, concentration, all of that, what results can we expect? So I think this biostimulant usage is growing across the world and there is a huge market also that it is capturing. There are annual biostimulant world congresses also that happen on this topic. So these biostimulants are certain substances resulting from microbial activity or some, when certain things are disintegrated. So, so they kind of, they are not pesticides themselves or fertilizers themselves and they don't have much of nutrients in themselves. Whatever nutrients are found in those biostimulants, in our case, like jivambuta, are just incidental and we are not using just for nutrition sake. But they have other functions like, you know, what they have mentioned, like they have the capacity to stimulate the plant to grow more, grow roots deeper and produce lot of biomass and help in uptake of lot of nutrients in water. And also gives, offers resistance against certain pests, diseases and also droughts, all of that. It, the biostimulants are, they function, you know, in improving the physiology, physiological functions of the plant. So as a result, the crops that use biostimulants are richer in food quality, shelf life, biofortification, all of that. So the processes are many, methods of preparing the biostimulants are many. So in our project, we are, we are using this panchagargya, saptadanya, ankurakashaya, all of this. They are used in small quantities, yet they are very effective in terms of their performance in the crop. So I think there is a lot for us to learn how a biostimulants affect the plant positively. So this is a very good video, I find. Yeah, next video please.
Paristhithante mainu kutumulos thri pramukkam ainudhe. Appudu naaku aaragaparisthiti bhaaga paotam olana. Nenu chala denasthitul onana. Ma kellal nee maamavall inti tagirupampichi. Valu school maankoni, amavall inti tagrundi. Mari roju maayana nana hospitalike, roju hospitalike elta undevana. Chala badan eda anbuvinchan, dani dwara makku, da bivela apguodainande. Baytnund apputetskunnam nee. Vadi kapputetskoni. Double chalaka paristhitul bhaaga netwanti sthitul. Memunnam, unnappudu. Ee JDBNF gurinchitelisi, dani teliskoni, avyavasayin cheshtu, acheshtu na aharman tinthu. Nenu recovery avatum po partu, na kutumbu aaragyanu kodakhaapautkodan eda jarigundhi. Mariipudu kellalike nee andubhatla, kellan ready cheskolana, varike homework visumlo sahayin chaitum, tyanki kellala schoolupampitu. A prakruthi vasayin chesantarvata, na aaragyun chala kudutupadindandi. Aaragyunga sammanichina padardhal tiskotam valla, nee healthyga chala aaragyunga. Adi start jesne naalu sausralathandi. Achvalka i prakruthi vasayindwaraa, ma staffla antamandaita prakruthi vasayin koragail pandestanara. Valu dagrunchi neen konchun, takku ratek valu dagrundu tiskoni. Anekmandiki manchi aaragyu vich, ma grama parangakaani, kontamandika aaragyu vivitaniki, naavantu kushthaitaniki, neen akkandu koragail diskochi, ma shopla amutam jarigundandi. I prakruthi vasayindwaraa, nee na kutumbu parangama, nee chala merupadamandi. Takku petubaduto pantal pandichutam dwara, ma konchun adayam anedema kochindi. Raatam dwara, ma kellanu konchun karmentla sadhvi chokotani. Marla in konchun boomi, adikanga tiskoni, boomi eyitanu kodha, i prakruthi vasayin anedema chala opiyakupadindi. Adheyvedanga naakadaayama nee perigundandi. Enukante, andratho etwanti muppibasthal badnayyo, ma pantla kodha adheyvedanga muppibasthal ochidi. Dhan dwara naakadaayama nee perigundhi, petubad taggindi. Armour Field School nee ma bashlo chapalante, ma manchi palumbadandi. Nizaniki, okaraitul andaro, kulla matha bedhalanee lekunda, chinnapaddanee tarthamim lekunda. Andaro kalisi, oku vedikuga kuchoni, okar anbuvalu okulupansukuntu, okul kastusokalnu okul chepukuntu. Mari ponsaage visumlo ok manchi flat farmandi, adi mapu. Mari NFFL dwara, ivanu neen thenskona, practicalskama suupinsittamu. Mari vaatlam neen vinvalvai poi, marmentane, a next week, ma pantalo. Valu emaita chepparu, okokla anbu, raithul anbuval chettaru. Avi chepni, ivi mana boomlo unneya leda. Avi mana boomlo mana mochaitundwaraa, mana boomkaasal opiyakuma nee vunda leda, nee chesi, nee mani practicalsta, vaatni ma palallo prayogin chasta. JDBNF lo pradanamayna mukki udyesu ventante, okpantakaakunda, andrapantla eytundwaraa, adikla abalu pondutamani. Ma kathro ochi, na dey ventante, neen marun vedanga, neen ey vedanga, ita prakruthi vasayin lo nee ochi. Danlo nee anbuval nee nalaru chustanana. Na thoot raithul andar kodha, adheyvedanga mari, prakruthi vasayin chayalanmadhe naade. Valu memu sanhitanga kalisi, ee JDBNF anedhi chaitun jarutundhi.
So I think the message is clear. Actually, FPO has tried to capture various benefits of farmer field schools that are done by APCNF carders. So they try to capture how they are now improving their natural farming experience as a group and also what other social dimensions that they are able to see like. Because FFS or agroecology is not just about natural crops and all of that, but about circular economy and improved social fabric. Like she was mentioning that now in our group, there is no, there are no barriers like caste, creed, religion, all of that because we were mingling together. In FFS activities and we are working on the same experiments, worlds, all of that. So this has, this group activity has addressed all these issues that we were otherwise facing earlier. So I think it's a wonderful story because I was there during the development of this case study from start to finish. And it's a longer version actually, but there is a, this is an abridged version. And her story was selected for Food Heroes concept by FPO. I think it was selected last year. The previous year, another food hero from our project, his story was now projected on the Coliseum in Rome. So very good stories, yes. Yeah, next please.
Greetings from Australia and from our Global Regenerate Earth Network. I'm honored to be invited to give this keynote address to the Ninth Korean Urban Agricultural Conference. And even if only with you virtually, wish you and the conference every success. Tonight, I wish to explore urban agriculture and how it may be central to humanity's last chance to secure its future and a safe, cooler climate. To do that, we need to look at reality. As we are aware, there are now eight billion of us on this finite planet with 10 billion projected by 2050. We all need to eat daily. Only seven missed meals may separate social stability and chaos. Over half of us now live in urban concentrations. Up to 80% may do so by 2050. It follows from this that securing our safe air, water, food, shelter, habitats and social stability will be critical for our future. However, to secure these essential needs and outcomes will be challenging due to our changing climate, not just the warming that we're all aware of, but the accelerating dangerous hydrological extremes. Our degradation of our soils, water and biosystems we depend on for our survival and our increasing dependence, vulnerability and exposure to resource limits on this finite planet. More threatening than these physical stresses are our demonstrated impotence to resolve such long-known realities. This inertia in our protected status quo impedes innovation, solutions and change. We must and can overcome these threats and imperatives, but only if we focus urgently on regenerating the resilience and supply capacity of natural ecologies and empowering our agency at grassroots community levels to regenerate these ecologies urgently. As we are responsible for the crises we face and their consequences, we must also become more response-able. Rather than continue our impotence, we need solutions. Fortunately, we have them in nature. If we are prepared to ask and understand how nature created the biosystems and climate we evolved in and depend on. To ask how nature 420 million years ago used microbes, particularly fungi, to colonize and solubilize rocks on land to create soils. How these soils enabled the land to retain water and thereby the rapid evolution and extension of our terrestrial biosystems, their hydrology and the stable climate we and our economies totally depend on. How these same petagenesis processes to regenerate the earth's soil carbon sponge are now our only basis of agency to restore and secure the biosystems. The projected 10 billion need to rely on to sustain and buffer their safe climate and meet their essential. एंड मीट डिस एसेंशुअल फूड नीड्स, जस्ट आज वी नीड तू अंडरस्टैंड हाउ नेच्यर क्रिएटेड दिस हैबिटॅट्स, वी नीड तू अंडरस्टैंड व्हाट वी हैव डन तू डेम एंड डी कॉन्सक्वेंसेस, हाउ आवर ऑक्सिडेशन ऑफ़ दिस बियोसिस्टम्स, बोथ फायर, क्लीयरिंग एंड एवर मोर इंटेंसिव इंडस्ट्रियल फार्मिंग, हस रिवर्स पेटाजेनिसिस, रिजॉल्टिंग इन डी डेग्रेडेशन एंड डिसर्टिफिकेशन ऑफ़ सोइल्स एंड डेट इनबिलिटीज तू सस्टेन आवर एसेंशुअल वॉटर, फूड एंड बियोरिसोर्स नीड्स, हाउ इंस्टेड अन रिजेनरेटिंग डी एर्थ, सोइल, कार्बन, स्पंज, वी हैव एंड आर डेग्रेडिंग इट, एंड विद डेट, डी रिजिलियंस, प्रोडक्टिविटी एंड लाइव सपोर्टिंग कैपेसिटी ऑफ़ डी बियोसिस्टम्स वी डिपेंड ऑन, इंस्टेड अन सोइल डेग्रेडेशन, वी नीड तू हार्नस डी CO2 डेट इस अन सिम्टम ऑफ़ डेग्रेडेशन आज अन रिसोर्स एंड बेसिस ऑफ़ आवर एजेंसी फॉर आवर रिजेनरेशन, आज नेच्यर डिड 420 मिलियन ईयर्स अगो, वी तू कैन हार्नस CO2 फ्रॉम डी एयर एंड उस तू रिजेनरेट डी एर्थ, सोइल, कार्बन, स्पंज, वी एंड फार्मर्स एवरीवेयर कैन डू दिस प्रैक्टिकली एंड सिंपली बाय मैक्सिमाइजिंग प्लैंट ग्रोथ एंड फोटोसिंथेसिस, विच कन्वर्ट सीओ तू इनटू प्लैंट बियोमैस, बट देन मोस्ट इंपॉर्टेंटली मिनिमाइजिंग हाउ मच ऑफ़ डेट बियोमैस इस ऑक्सिडाइज बैक तू सीओ तू बाय बर्निंग ओको ऑक्सिडेटिव प्रैक्टिसेस, एंड अलसो मैक्सिमाइजिंग डी बियोसीक्वेस्ट्रेशन ऑफ़ डेट बियोमैस बैक इनटू स्टेबल सोइल, कार्बन, इनोवेटिव फार्मर्स ग्लोबली आर डूइंग दिस बाय नेचुरल लेस ऑक्सिडेटिव फार्मिंग प्रोसेसेस, इन डूइंग सो, दे आर सीक्वेस्ट्रिंग अप तू 10 टन्स ऑफ़ कार्बन पर हेक्टेपर अनम, बैक इनटू डी सोइल्स तू रिबिल्ड डी एर्थ, सोइल, कार्बन, स्पंज, एक्सटेंडेड ग्लोबली, सच सोइल एंड लैंड रिजेनरेशन कैन रैपिडली ड्रॉ डाउन एन एडिशनल 20 बिलियन टन्स ऑफ़ कार्बन एनुअली ओवर डी वर्ल, दिस इस ट्वाइस आवर फोस्टल फ्यूल इमिशन्स, इट इनेबल्स अस तू अचीव ए 10 बिलियन टन्स कार्बन पर अनम, नेगेटिव नेट इमिशन टारगेट ग्लोबली बाय 2030, सो दिस अन क्रिटिकल बेंचमार्क्स डेट वी कैन अचीव तू सोइल, कार्बन, रिजेनरेशन, वाल्स दिस प्रैक्टिकल प्रॉफिटिवल एक्शंस कैन ड्रॉ डाउन कार्बन, आज इन नेच्यर, डेट रियल सिग्निफिकेंस इस इन रिस्टोरिंग डी एर्थ, टेरेस्ट्रियो हाइड्रोलॉजी, फॉर डिस दिस हाइड्रोलॉजिकल प्रोसेसेस डेट अन फंडामेंटल, आज दे गवर्न ऑल लाइफ ऑन दिस प्लॅनेट, इस प्रोडक्टिविटी, एक्सटेंट, इकोसिस्टम सर्विसेस एंड सुवाइबल, सम 95% ऑफ़ डी हीट डायनामिक्स एंड दस क्लाइमेट ऑफ़ डी ब्लू प्लॅनेट इस गवर्न बाय दिस हाइड्रोलॉजिकल प्रोसेसेस, आवर कैपेसिटी तू रिजेनरेट बियोसिस्टम्स एंड साइफ्ली कूल डी क्लाइमेट इन टाइम इस गवर्न बाय दिस हाइड्रोलॉजिकल प्रोसेसेस, लाइफ, आवर हेल्थ, रिजेनरेशन, सुवाइबल एंड डी क्लाइमेट ऑल रिगुलेटेड बाय डेट, डी एर्थ, सोइल, कार्बन, स्पंजेस एंड डी सीओ तू ड्रॉ डाउन उस तू क्रिएट इट, इस नौ क्रिटिकल इन रिबिल्डिंग डेट हाइड्रोलॉजी एंड मेकिंग डेट वॉटर अवेलेबल, दिस अलसो रेज़स आवर ऑप्शंस फॉर उसिंग दिस नेचुरल हाइड्रोलॉजिकल प्रोसेसेस तू कूल डी क्लाइमेट, डी क्लाइमेट इनक्लूडिंग मच ऑफ़ इट्स ग्रीनहाउस अफेक्ट, इस रिगुलेटेड बाय अन बैलेंस ऑफ़ हाइड्रोलॉजिकल प्रोसेसेस डेट आइथर वार्म, कूल एंड बफर लोकल एंड ग्लोबल कंडीशंस, वी कैन इन्फ्लुएंस दिस लोकल कंडीशंस बाय अल्टरिंग डी बैलेंस ऑफ़ दिस प्रोसेसेस एंड डी अफेक्ट, फॉर एक्सांपल, बाय अल्टरिंग डी ट्रांसपेरेशन ऑफ़ वॉटर बाय प्लांट्स, विच प्रोवाइड अन सिग्निफिकेंट कूलिंग अफेक्ट, अल्टरनेटरी, बाय डी प्रोडक्शन ऑफ़ ह्यूमर्ड हेज माइक्रोन्यूक्लियट डेट फॉर्म परसिस्टेंट वार्मिंग ह्यूमर्ड हेजेस, ओर थ्रू डी प्रोडक्शन ऑफ़ हाइगोस्कॉपिक प्रिसिपिटेशन न्यूक्लिय, डेट कोएलेस दिस हेज माइक्रो ड्रॉपलेट्स एंड कन्वर्ट डेम इनटू क्लाउड ड्रॉपलेट्स, रिफ्लेक्स सोलर राइडेशन बैक तू स्पेस, देबाइ कूलिंग डी एरियाज बिलो डेम, इट्स दिस हाइड्रोलॉजिकल प्रोसेसेस डेट वी कैन इन्फ्लुएंस, विच अगेन फंडामेंटल इन गवर्निंग आवर हाइड्रोलॉजिकल साइकल्स, आवर क्लाइमेट, बट अलसो आवर एजेंसी ओवर डेम, डी डायनामिक्स ऑफ़ दिस हाइड्रोलॉजिकल साइकल्स, आवर रेनफॉल एंड इट्स रिटेंशन बाय सोइल्स, अलसो इन्फ्लुएंसेस डी एरिया एंड लॉन्जेविटी ऑफ़ ग्रीन प्लैंट ग्रोथ एंड ऑफ़ कोर्स, डेट कूलिंग ट्रांसपेरेशन अफेक्ट, अलसो इन्फ्लुएंसेस डी एक्सपोज़र एंड लेवल ऑफ़ सोलर हीट अब्सॉरप्शन एंड दस डी टेंपरेचर ऑफ़ आवर सोइल्स, एंड आज आवर सोइल्स गेट वार्मर, दे कैन रिराइडेट फार फार मोर हीट बैक इनटू डी आटमस्फेर, विच ड्राइव्स डी ग्रीनहाउस अफेक्ट, सो इन अन सेंस, इट्स आवर मैनेजमेंट ऑफ़ डी हाइड्रोलॉजी, डेट कैपेसिटी तू कूल सोइल्स, विच इन फैक्ट गवर्न्स डी अमाउंट ऑफ़ रिराइडेशन फ्रॉम डी एर्थ, विच इस ड्राइवर ऑफ़ डी ग्रीनहाउस अफेक्ट, ऑफ़ कोर्स, वॉटर इस अलसो डोमिनेट ग्रीनहाउस गैस, रिप्रेजेंटिंग सम 80% ऑफ़ डेट ग्रीनहाउस गैस अफेक्ट, एंड अगेन इन्फ्लुएंसेस डी क्लाइमेट इन दिस वे, दिस हाइड्रोलॉजिकल प्रोसेस अलसो इन्फ्लुएंस डी क्लाइमेट थ्रू डी फॉर्मेशन ऑफ़ हाई प्रेशर हीट डोम्स, बाय जेनरेटिंग दिस रिराइडेड हीट, एंड ऑफ़ कोर्स, दिस हाई प्रेशर हीट डोम्स अन फंडामेंटल अफेक्ट इन ब्लॉकिंग डी इनफ्लो ऑफ़ कूल, मॉइस्ट, लो प्रेशर एयर, विच इस डी बेसिस ऑफ़ आवर मोनसूनल रेनफॉल एंड एयर फ्लोट, सो ओवरऑल, वी हैव मेजर एजेंसी ओवर दिस प्रोसेसेस एंड अफेक्ट्स बाय आवर लैंड एंड प्लैंट मैनेजमेंट, वी मस्ट उस डेम नौ आज आवर ओन्ली प्रैक्टिकल मींस तू साइफ्ली कूल रीजंस एंड डी क्लाइमेट इन टाइम, वाल्स दिस सब्सटेंशिएटेड साइंस गवर्निंग एंड कम्फर्मिंग दिस प्रोसेसेस इस लॉन्ग बी नोन, आवर नारो फोकस ऑन जस्ट डी सीओ तू ग्रीनहाउस कोम्पोनेट अफेक्ट हस मास्ट दिस रियलिटी, एंड एंड डी रियलिटी डेट बेसिकली डेंजरस हाइड्रोलॉजिकल क्लाइमेट एक्सट्रीम्स आर अर्जेंटली इंपैक्टिंग मोस्ट रीजंस एंड ऑफ़ कोर्स, रिस्क मेजर डिसरुप्शन, वी हैव लेस नन अन डेकेड तू अवॉइड डी क्लैप्स ऑफ़ की बियोसिस्टम्स ड्यू तू दिस हाइड्रोलॉजिकल एक्सट्रीम्स, अर्जेंट लोकल ग्रासरूट्स रिजेनरेशन एंड बफरिंग एक्शन इस नीडेड तू मिनिमाइज दिस, ओन्ली बाय इंपावरिंग लोकल कम्युनिटी रिकॉग्निशन एंड रिस्पांस अबिलिटीज कैन वी नौ डू दिस, विच ब्रिंग्स अस तू डी रोल ऑफ़ डी अर्बन एग्रिकुल्ट्रिक, आज मोस्ट पीपल नौ लिव इन अर्बन एरियाज, दे एंड वी विल बी इन डी फ्रंट लाइन एंड ऑफन वॉल्युर्बल तू दिस हाइड्रोलॉजिकल एक्सट्रीम्स, गिवन डी लाक ऑफ़ एफेक्टिव एक्शंस अन हायर लेवल्स, डी क्वेश्चन इस, कैन लोकल कम्युनिटी एक्शन बफर एंड अवॉइड सच इंपैक्स, तू व्हाट एक्सटेंट कैन वी वाय अर्बन एग्रिकुल्ट्रिक एंड लैंड रिजेनरेशन, रिजेनरेट अर्बन सोइल्स, हाइड्रोलॉजीज एंड फॉरेस्ट तू बेटर शेल्टर, बफर एंड कूल लोकल क्लाइमेट, वी हैव केस स्टडीज, वेल, आई लिव हियर इन कैंब्रा फॉर एक्सांपल, वेल वी गेट अन अप तू 10 डिग्री सेंटाग्रेड कूलिंग ऑन होट डेज ड्यू तू डी ट्रांसपेरेशन अफेक्ट ऑफ़ अर्बन फॉरेस्ट रिलेटिव तू नियर्बाई अजैसन डेयर एरियाज, कैन वी उस आवर अर्बन एग्रिकुल्ट्रिक रिजेनरेशन तू सिक्योर डी प्रोडक्शन ऑफ़ न्यूट्रिशियस फूड लोकली फ्रॉम अर्बन गार्डन्स तू हेल्प मीट आवर नीड्स, बिकम लेस डिपेंडेंट ऑन इंडस्ट्रियल फार्मिंग एंड सुप्लाई चैन्स डेट आर रिस्क दिस एक्सट्रीम, कैन वी लोकली साइफ्ली ट्रीट वाइस एंड रिसाइकल एसेंशुअल न्यूट्रियंस तू अवॉइड आवर हाई फर्टिलाइजर इनपुट्स, बट अलसो डिजीज रिस्क, कैन वी रियंफोर्स डी प्रेवेंटिव हेल्थ ऑफ़ कम्युनिटीज बाय डी प्रिविजन ऑफ़ लोकली ग्रोन फ्रेश फ्रूड्स विथ हायर न्यूट्रिशनल इंटेग्रिटी बीइंग प्रोड्यूस्ड इन दिस अर्बन एग्रिकुल्ट्रिक, बट पैप्स मोस्ट पाउर्फ्ली कैन वी इंपावर लोकल स्किल्स, एंगेजमेंट एंड एक्टिटी बाय ग्रोइंग लोकल फ्रूड्स एंड क्रिएटिंग लोकल इको बिजनेसेस